All right, good evening. It is 1700 hours. Calling this Frederick County School Board Capital Improvement's Plan Work Session into Order. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda that is before us.
We have a motion to approve the agenda before us. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. I will turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, staff. Good evening, School Board. Good evening, those listening at home. We are very excited to be moving forward with our capital improvement plan projects. We have our top three projects that we are going to be discussing with you this evening. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our Board of Supervisors for approving the appropriation of dollars for these projects. This is a really big deal. It's a big deal for our community, for our kids, and for us moving forward to respond to the growth, to provide what our students what they need. So I just wanted to take that time to thank them and as we continue to move forward with this process. So for this evening, we wanted to discuss a couple items with you all. First, we wanted to discuss the bid process for each project. We did discuss this yesterday at our Buildings and Grounds Committee, and we want to go ahead and rehash that out with you all to see if there are any questions. As I mentioned to you all, if we move forward with the design bid build process, that does not need to go before the Board for a vote. If we did move forward with the CMAR or the PPEA, you all would have to vote on that. So if that does change, we would need to discuss what that was going to be looking like in regards to next steps. Then what we're going to do is we're going to talk about the project delivery model as well as our current status of modulars. We are in some space concerns and issues still at some of our schools, so we want to talk about what the current status of our modulars are as we continue to grow, as we wait for these projects to be built. Because as we spoke about, once we got approval for these dollars, there's not going to be a magic wand and all of a sudden we have a fourth high school and two expansions. It does take three to five years to get all these projects done, and we still have some of our schools that are over capacity, and we want to make sure that we provide them with a conducive learning environment that doesn't impact their ability to learn. So we want to discuss that with you this evening as well. And then what we're going to do is we have updated charts of enrollments of what it will look like once these projects are done. We have updated those charts so you can take a look at what those look like, as well as our future CIP priorities. Now, as we've discussed, we want to be very sensitive and respect the fact that these are three really big projects that we were just approved for. However, as you can see in front of you, we have posted on Board Docs, there are 19 other projects that are not too far down the road that we want to make sure that we do not lose focus on, but we have met with the county today, actually, to talk about strategy in regards to how we are going to not forget these other projects that are on this list and what that next five-year plan is going to look like. So when we get to that point, I will discuss that with you all. And we did discuss this back at our budget retreat two weeks ago, so nothing has changed since that meeting. So when we get to that point of this meeting, I will share more details and specifics with you. And then we wanted to briefly discuss the reorganization of planning and construction as we respond to the growth, the redistricting, and all the other aspects of planning and construction. I wanted to share with you all again, you all have seen it, but I just want to see if you all had any questions as a group in regards to that reorganization, which we are moving forward on. Okay. All of the information today is for information only. As I mentioned, there is no information that needs to be moved to the full Board for approval unless there's any changes with the bid process. So with that, I'm now going to hand it over to Mr. Goodwin and his team, and we are going to tag-team the rest of this presentation. Now, this is a work session, so please, we're going to stop, take intentional stops to see if there's any questions, any comments, so this isn't anything we have to wait till the end of the presentation. So please chime in as we move throughout. Okay? So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll hand it over to Mr. Goodwin.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, colleagues and friends, thank you all for being here tonight. We're looking forward to this conversation with you. I feel like I'm loud. Is that loud? Okay. All right. I'm okay. All right. I'm always loud, thanks. All right. So last night, we talked a little bit about recommendations for funded projects as terms of delivery models, so I wanted to start tonight by walking through those again. You have the information in front of you. It's also up on the screen at Middletown Elementary School. We have a task order vendor already, so design bid build there for the construction process. Jordan Springs, design bid build, and the fourth high school, design bid build is what we'd like to do for the architect as well as the construction manager. I talked last night, so I want to just say it again, because most of you here, but not all, we're seeing across the Commonwealth, money is being saved with folks who go through the design bid build process at this time, just because of the number of firms that are bidding on both of these processes. So we hope that that's going to be the same for us, to make sure that we're good stewards of our dollar. So the specific plans would include the use of our task order vendor, as I mentioned, and then the bid process on the Middletown project would be just for the construction firm. The same would be true for Jordan Springs. We spent a good bit of money and time working with the staff for conceptual plans and designs, but again, those are just conceptual plans and designs. Now it's time to bring in other stakeholders as well and make sure that we tidy all of those plans up so that we can put that out for bid. We've talked with our task order vendor, I think Mr. Kenny just today, in the last few days, about making sure we get ready for that process to go out for bid. On the fourth high school, design bid build is what we're recommending again, and that would be for the architectural and engineering process first, and then later on, we'd use that same process again, the design bid build, which would be the construction management for a second contract with them. So timeline, I just want to make sure I make everyone familiar with their project timeline for each one of these. The fourth high school, we have, looking at completion, an opening fall of 2029. The Middletown Elementary School and Jordan Springs Elementary School expansions, both of those opening up in fall of 2028. So I wanted to pause there just for a minute before we look at modulars and things and how we're going to look at enrollment now for any questions.
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Last evening, I brought up the idea of combining different projects under one bid.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if the Middletown expansion, Jordan Springs expansion would be something that could benefit from that.
I believe that's, is that a possibility, Mr. Kenny?
Or is it too big of a project?
Not too big of a project?
No, it's not too large.
It's just a matter of if it's attractive to do that. Sometimes you lose, when you get bundled, they call it bundling.
Yeah.
Projects together. Sometimes when you do that, you can also get into a situation where the GC will, are beholden to one project more than the other, and they say, "We can get to that project when we get this one done," or either workload goes over and shifts. So I've been through that process before. Sometimes it's not the most advantageous. We do also believe that you will attract different levels of contractors. We may have one that want to go after a $22 million project and not really interested in a 13 million. Put the two together, it might stretch their workforce within themselves, you know, with their project managers and things like that. So it's always an attractive thing to look at. We've looked at it in the past here, but I've also did it before. It's not, it's not something that can't be looked at, but we would have to decide pretty quick on if that's what we're going to do.
Of course. I didn't know if there was any indication of data or anything that would indicate that it saves money.
The advantages can also be the disadvantages. I'll just kind of put it that way. So what you do gain sometimes can also hurt you on the other side. So it's just, it's just, you just don't know until you get into it, and we don't want to get into something and then...
Of course.
Hey, well, I wish we'd have went somewhere else.
Sure.
Wish we'd have split these up or something like that. So we just feel at the best at this time, from what we're hearing on the market out there, that, hey, we're not going to go after the small school. We might go after that 22 million, but the other one's too small. And then you get some people that can't bond and things like that.
No, I got you.
So you eliminate some, but you bring bigger players back into the fold again. So it's, it's, we'll discuss it, you know, and see if that's where we want to go, but we'll go to the powers that be.
No, I mean...
That's a good question.
You're the expert.
It's a good question.
It's a great question. We need to continue to follow up on. I want to remind everyone, too, that these are two very different projects, where the Jordan Springs project is fairly straightforward. From an addition standpoint, and the Middletown project is much more expansive, and the site work is pretty extensive. So they're two very different projects.
The complexity of the two, we may be able to knock the one out a little quicker, and then the other, Jordan Springs, may go a little faster than the other one. So we did it years ago, when I was on the other side of the fence here, when we did all-day kindergarten additions to four different schools. The options was on the table, you could bid them all as a package, or you could pick and choose which ones you wanted to do. So I was part of the group that took them all as one package. We got all of them, got them done early, and it all worked out fine. So there's the advantages. It's a good, good question, something to explore.
Okay. Thank you.
We're definitely going to take an aggressive timeline approach to get these completed on time.
No, of course.
Because we want to make sure that if we're going to use modulars in these settings, we get them in, get them out, get kids moved in, too. The timeline is, is pretty aggressive, so...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Mr. Chairman, so, speaking of aggressive timelines, and maybe it's good that I'm on this corner in case he throws something at me. So I asked last night about the 15 months and what was customary, what was normal, and so I'm sorry for, if this is repetitive, but I've been thinking a lot on this since yesterday evening and that conversation. I cannot imagine the undertaking that doing this from scratch for a fourth high school is going to be. But I also am trying to take into account a lot of the conversations that the Board has had even before I got here about the urgency of the project. So I want to make sure I at least ask one time, at risk of being in mortal danger over here, does it have to take 15 months before we get this thing rolling?
I'll, I'll jump in here. We spent a good part of the day, and as we're wont to do, we're reorganizing our department, as you heard there, but it doesn't mean the work stops. So we met with finance today with Ms. Chapman, and Dr. Hummer, pulled him aside just so we could run by some of the dates, the timelines that it takes to get these things up and off the ground. If we're favorable after tonight, and if I'm over speaking, please stop, cut me off. But we're looking to post the RFP tomorrow for the fourth high school. You know, that means we're advertising for architects to enter into the process. And Ms. Chapman just shared these with right before this meeting. We would have, what you would have is a pre-proposal conference. You have to have time for those architects to disseminate and look at what they want to do. Does it affect, does it fit their level of expertise and things like that? So that's what come back, it looks like, on the 12th, around the 12th of December. So, so it's moving fast, and we've got Thanksgiving in there, things like that, there are challenges. You have a pre-proposal conference, which if anybody's around construction, it'd be like a pre-bid conference. Now, these dates I'm sharing is a draft form. We haven't finalized these because we just got them this afternoon from working through these, so just, these may change a little bit. So we'll have like a pre-bid or pre-proposal conference that would come in around the 11th. We have a question deadlines that would, excuse me, pre-proposal conference on the 4th. We'd have, the question deadlines would come in on the 11th. You give them a week for any questions that they came up at the pre-bid, pre-proposal. And then we would have their proposals to us right before Christmas, around the 18th. That gives our staff, we have a committee that we're trying to form right now, that we'll look at them for the couple days before the winter break. We come back from the winter break, we come back for a committee review around the first week of January. We, we prep for interviews, which groups we want to bring in. You could get as many as eight, 10, 12 architectural firms. We don't interview all of them. We kind of weed through which ones that fit what we think their expertise fits into a high school, not all of them did a high school, things like that. They do interviews and presentations with hit about mid-month. Then we receive a proposal from the final selectee around the 20th, 21st of January. Those would go to the executive committee. They would enter into negotiations, and hopefully we would have something to present maybe at the first buildings and grounds of the 1st of February. So that's kind of a rough timeline through holidays and through timelines of where we're at present day to where we get to where a proposal for our architectural firm would come before you guys, the School Board, ready for approval. If we have no hiccups, it goes out, it goes a full board meeting, looks like I've got here the 18th of February. So you've eaten up a couple, few months. We're anticipating to, from all past experience of meeting with our, with different firms and our task order people, to allow it by March of '26. So that's about a 13-month, 14-month swing that they could get moving on it and hopefully get back to, we have something ready to go to bid. I would say anticipate the 1st of April of '26 for our tech, for our construction groups. They need some time to put a bid together, 30 days is pretty standard to come back, so that'd be the 1st of May. We would get multiple bids back. You had to select which ones, you know, you, it's a hard bid if it's design bid build, low bid, make sure they qualify. You need a couple-week process to get through all that. Get our contracts in place. Hopefully, we're initiate construction around the 1st of June. And that's a down-and-dirty kind of a quick timeline and...
So yeah, Mr. Kenny, so Dr. Erskine, thank you for that question. And if I can ask a question, are you, are you asking that we open FY '28? Is that why you're asking that? Because we're on track to open on FY '29. I was just curious as to why you're asking that question.
Kind of twofold. A, because I want to make sure I understand what the timeline looks like and understand like what, I don't like calling it lag time because there's so much work happening during that time period. I'm just trying to think of that sense of urgency that we went to the Board of Supervisors with, and trying to, trying to get through this process as responsibly quickly as we can. One of the kind of side conversations we had a couple of months ago in Buildings and Grounds was, is it even possible to include some sense of urgency? I mean, can you say in one of these requests for bids that time is of the essence, either for architectural and engineering and/or construction? So, and I'm open to the answer being no, but I just wanted to make sure I asked the question.
Yeah, so, and I apologize, I don't think I heard the answer to my question. So we are on track to open FY '29. So this, part of this process is we're going to speed it up the best we can, but is your question, and is the Board's question, do you want us to open FY '28? Is, do you want to push this a year sooner?
I just want somebody to tell me if I've lost my mind about asking that question. Because I know, I recognize that a year is a huge difference.
Sure.
And if I'm completely out of the ballpark, just tell me.
It's too aggressive.
It's pretty aggressive for a high school, and there's, it's pretty aggressive. A three-year build-out is pretty much standard. Yes, we don't, we don't do acceleration fees and stuff like that typically as a school system because it's taxpayer money, and, but it can be done. When a contractor is awarded part of their presentation, when they come in, we'll ask for their schedule, and they'll provide us a schedule that's, it could be accelerated. There's not much advantage, though, if we get mid-year. It's tough to open a school mid-year, and so it would have to be a full year, basically. And a high school is a tough, tough one because there's a lot of moving parts, and it's, and it's everything from athletic facilities to, do you name it, to outfitting the school and things like that. So I wish the timeline was accelerated, that we could do that. I just can't say that for sure until we enter into the process with a GC or something. Can you deliver this early? A year, 12-month is a big ask.
So, Mr. Kenny?
Thank you for clarifying. I feel a lot better now, knowing the answer, and thank you for humoring a kind of silly honest question.
It's quite all right. It's not humorous.
And if I can, if I can add to that, too, Dr. Erskine, so we spent a lot of time collaborating with other school divisions. So I actually spoke with two school divisions this past week that have been through this process here recently, and I've shared with them our timeline, I've shared with them kind of what we're going through, and everything is, is spot-on. So we, we are on track to move forward with these projects as we've anticipated, as we've planned, and we are not over-projecting or under-projecting. We are right where we need to be to make sure that we stay on top of what the cost is, because that's, I think, that was one of the pieces that I heard, and that's one of the main reasons I'm asking, because I want to make sure that I'm getting the right marching orders from you all, is that what I've heard throughout this process is to get this cheaper. And, and if we're going to start making these shifts and adjustments of getting it quicker and adding all these things, that's going to be more expensive. So that was two different marching orders. I want to make sure that I'm clear on the direction we're going in, so that I, that I didn't overstep or we're going in the direction you want us to go in. So that, that helps, and thank you for that.
We just want both. We want it now, and we want it cheap. I mean, I don't understand what the confusion is.
That's clear.
Mr. Chair.
I do, I do actually have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Just before we get too off-topic with, to Mr. Bell's point about the bid process, is there a way that, and I don't know if it's legal under the Virginia Public Procurement Act, I know that's very stringent and rightfully so, is there a way that we could bid out the package deal, if you will, both elementary schools, and say, hey, here's option one, and then put them out for bids separately, have basically three bids out, one for both, and then two others, one for Middletown and one for Jordan Springs?
Yeah, that's kind of what we were saying. We could.
You could.
Yeah. We could, if we choose to do, if you choose to do that option, we could. It may be making a little more work for our financial, finance group up there, but...
They don't have anything else going on.
Because they got to come up with two separate, two separate things of bid documents, and we go out. So yeah, you could do them as a package, both of them there, or do them both individually, like what we did years ago. So yes, you could do that. Yeah, I don't see, there's no reason, if that's what you choose, and that's by marching orders, yes, I think that's what we'll...
And if it gets it cheaper, absolutely, we'd want to do that, yeah.
Well, and not to poo-poo my own thought process, but you kind of indicated that that's not the direction you would recommend we go.
It just brings in a lot of different dynamics into, it brings in another set of dynamics, I should say. Yeah. I'm not saying it, in my past experience, it has worked and it's not worked. I'll just say that. It could, it could be a coin toss of that. You might get someone that says that it fits into the bigger general contractors, when I'm talking about the heavy hitters that build these schools, they like to fill in slots. They may have a gap of two years, and they may have the manpower, the management team and all like that, that they said, "We need to put them in a project, and I need something in that date, coming up in a year's time." And a small project, maybe just the size that'll fit and where something else doesn't. So you just don't know until you go out there. But I'd have to, to talk to the powers that be, and we'll see if that's what you want.
The other complex, I'm sorry. The other complexity, too, is if you have the same group working construction on both projects and the group breaks down, then you've now broken down on two projects.
Yeah.
Which we've had to work through some of that, you know, in years past as well, and we have done that successfully, but it's a lot of management, and we can certainly pursue that if that's something that you would like to do.
No, that actually is a great point. That's a single point of failure on two major projects, so, okay. It doesn't sound like the juice is worth the squeeze, so you're off the hook, Mrs. Anderson, for that, but, but thank you for explaining that.
Sure. We need to keep, we need to keep asking those questions because that's good, that's great. Hummer, you got something to say?
To, to Dr. Erskine's point, I understand the speed factor of it, and yeah, I'd love to see it built tomorrow the right way and done, but, and Mr. Kenny probably knows this and, and Mr. Davis, but, you know, you go by the six-piece, we usually call it the seven-piece, but we'll call it the six-piece here. Prior proper planning prevents poor performance. So I think if we get the right plan in, take our time on the right plan, we don't have a lot of rework in there, change orders, stuff like that, so, and that'll be a cost savings for us. But maybe an idea to get it cheaper and faster would be if, and I know that our land over there is, is a little bit different because of wetlands areas and, and stuff like that, and it is unique to our area, and we have different needs in this county versus other counties. But if we can get part of the submittal process, prior plans that other schools have done, if we can use those at a discounted rate, where we have to do very minimal changes to their architectural plans, maybe that'll speed up the A and E process, and we can get that, you know, for a lot cheaper. I'd like to see if, if that is a possibility. If it is, great, and we can move forward with that, and that'll, that'll condense that timeline and hopefully save us a few dollars.
So I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Atkins, and if I may, and you guys can chime in. I had some conversations with some architects a couple of weeks ago about that, and a lot of architects do use prototypes. They do use prototype plans, and absolutely, that's something that we can definitely consider, but it's going to be the aspects of, like you're mentioning, of using those prototype plans but tailoring that piece of land and property, and we can definitely have that conversation to see if it'll speed up that particular process. So that's not something that will be an issue. I think this will also be the tip of the iceberg as we continue to grow and expand, that these are prototypes that we can use moving forward, because I've heard you all loud and clear, we don't want to be building these extravagant buildings. We want to make sure that we are being good frugal, being frugal with our dollar, being good stewards of our dollar, but also building buildings that are going to last. So that is something that we can take a look at and look into. I don't know if you guys wanted to add to that, because I know we spoke about that as well.
Spot-on, same answer as I was basically going to give, that when we get, enter into AD firms and we do that, that's where it comes into play. That question comes up. Do you have, bring it, bring it to the fold? That they'll come back, look at the site, things like that, and they'll, they'll go through their rolodex of projects they did in the past, that'll be part of the presentation, things like that. So yes, we do enter into that all the time. We looked at that, at, Ailer was Pulaski High School redone, just fit our site, you know, things like that. So yeah, it does get done, and we definitely do enter into those conversations.
And it's my understanding, too, to Miles, to your point, Charando and Millbrook are very similar.
They're just...
They're flipped.
They're flipped, yeah.
They're flipped. And I, if I remember the murmurs from that timeframe, it was almost identical plans, except, of course, flipped with the tweaks, so...
Yep, same thing.
All right, great. Any other questions about timelines?
I don't want to beat it to death, but the heart of a building is the environment and the machinery that regulates the environment. I worked at Kennedy Airport, and just as an example, we had a bank of 1,000-tonne chillers, yorks, and when the main called for it, we would utilize two machines, and when it was really heavy, we would use all of them. But we had standardized the machinery so that we weren't stuck with one big absorber, 20-tonne absorber. We utilized the smaller machines, saves on costs. Also, they were American-made, and it was brought up before that American product is more expensive, but if you standardize the machinery, you will save in the long run. Same thing with heating the boilers, instead of getting one... Instead of getting one big boiler, you would get two boilers. And then you could apply them to the different buildings that you're constructing because of the man that's needed to keep the environment comfortable for people. So I'm just looking to bring the point up. If you standardize the machinery, you can use it in a multitude of buildings and still have a smaller stock for parts and repair because you only use them in all the buildings instead of having different machines in each individual building. Uh, the other aspect is so far as the environment is concerned, the outside shell retains the heat and cooling. Glass factor is a big thing so far as design is concerned. So we have a school that has a multitude of glass and I'm sure the expense of maintaining the environment exceeds what a building like this would be. That's the list I would bring up.
That's all right.
Thank you. Thank you for reminding us about that again. We will keep an eye on this.
I wrote notes. Uh, I keep notes all the time and, uh, understand. We did projects, um, I have in my career, but also since the school system, the transportation facility, uh, was designated, uh, percentage of it, American-made product, uh, had to be, uh, was done that way. Uh, usually they, we could stipify that, uh, based if there's federal dollars involved or if we choose to do so. So it's just something we need to discuss as a committee and as a, as a team here. Do we want to designate this project be partial? You don't have to do the whole project American-made, but you can definitely, um, do a percentage of it and, and works out it quite well. So it's just something that we, I wrote notes. So when we get down to the A and E firm and, and we get into that portion of the process, your, your ideas and your thoughts will definitely be shared with others. I'll guarantee you.
All right. So now that we've talked about the timelines and the delivery models and processes and questions, we're going to talk a little bit about overcrowding that's already occurring in our schools. So while these projects are taking place, we still need to find, uh, places for our students to learn that are safe and create those for them. So we're going to have to install some modulators at our schools along the way. So again, we're looking at, you know, a number of years before these projects are complete. So principals often, and I was one for many, many years, 14-plus years, you can manage about, you know, two or three classrooms of kids without figuring out, you know, just moving a room or making a multi-use space into a classrooms and things like that. And then you're kind of out of room. And so where we are at almost all of our schools, as you all know, is at that 100% capacity. So again, just to remind everyone about 85% capacity is where they recommend you begin planning. But we've been using, when we look at enrollment numbers again and projections and how full our schools are, we're looking at 100%. So we'll look at those again. So we want to make sure that we do something about that. So the modulators, I'm getting ready to show you on the next slide. We've built the, the number there with an average of 20 students per elementary modular. That's about the right size, a class size of 18 to, you know, 22. Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. That's, I'm making eye contact. Sorry about that. All right. So, um, we're going to look at these modulators here in a minute, but I just wanted to let you know that elementary school modulators are built with around 20 students and a modular in mind. Secondary schools are built with 24. So taking a look at the slide you have in front of you, if you look first at the column, that's the year 24, 25, that's this year. So those are the modulators we currently have. At Armel Elementary School, there's nine. Indian Hollow, um, and then you see Jordan Springs, uh, six. And then as you go down the line, there's, um, Charando with 16, Jameswood High School, 16 and such. So as we go across and you look about a 10-year time span, if nothing changes at Armel, that's why basically we're using our projections for enrollment to tell you how many modulators that we need. So if there's nine classrooms now that are there, we need that many based on those heat maps that we've looked at before for, for enrollment. They're staying about that same capacity. Bass Hoover, uh, next year, we would need that, not this year, but next year, we would need to consider adding four based on the enrollment there. Remember where Bass Hoover's located. It's between Armel and Middletown. So they're very heavily built out in that Bass Hoover area, so they need some classroom space. Um, if you look over at, um, Jordan Springs and also Middletown Elementary School, um, we're going to add eight more next year there, um, for Jordan Springs. And then Middletown Elementary School, we're going to need 10. Now, both of those come with restrooms for boys and restrooms for girls also. And they'll be fenced at the elementary school and secured. But I have highlighted at the end of those, that is in yellow because that's the year that those schools, the expansions are supposed to open, which would mean we would remove those. I put them in yellow because as the projects are completed, we can take off that illumination when we have certainty about how the projects are, you know, progressing. Take a look down at the high schools down there, of course. Um, you will notice that we've talked a lot about Millbrook. And then Millbrook needs 10, 11, 13. So you're looking at, you know, that year 29, 30. And those, all three high schools are illuminated. Why? Because that's when that fourth high school is supposed to open. So even though we have a wonderful renovation of Jameswood High School that's almost finished, we still have some modular classrooms that are in use. And I'm reluctant to remove those until that high school opens because we're just going to find ourselves in that place again based on the projected growth in that area. It would be irresponsible to move all those kids back inside, remove all the modulators and then just say, hey, we need them again because of the expense to remove them and then add them back. Any questions about that slide or those numbers? Again, they're based on projected enrollment.
Uh, I do have a question. Once we get past, um, 29, 30, um, isn't it kind of a wash? Because we're going to be redistricting, so we won't really know where we need what.
Yes, that's a great point to bring up because we've said all along that part of this solution for the school division is expansions and the addition of the high school. But as all of you know, we need another middle school. We need another elementary school down the road. So looking at redistricting is a piece that will have to take place. You'll be heavily involved in that. We'll need you to help us figure out that process. And the way that that would generally work is that process would begin about a year before. Um, the heavy work would begin about a year before that the high school opens so that it would be in place for those students when they arrive. So we'll present and have lots of conversations around redistricting. And we've talked about a lot of ideas already, but rather than do it one, two or three times before the high school opens, it's, we feel like it's better for our community if we do it all at the same time. So people will experience one move, one time, and we can help them through that with good answers and solutions and meetings and support rather than do that multiple times. I see a question.
Yeah, just, um, and for, sorry if you already answered this, but we went from zero to 10 at Millbrook.
Yes, we don't have any there now, but, um, they, they desperately need it. So we put that out. We're, our understanding from talking with school administration is the solution is there for space for, for now, but they really are kind of overcrowded. So that's the numbers. And those numbers there are just expanding. You already know that if you go out that way.
So does that, I mean, does that at least, at least give them some temporary relief to go, um, 10 extra classrooms?
It will, yes. And we wouldn't do 10, 11, 13. What we would do before we put that 10th one is, is make sure that's enough. And we would make sure we had enough when we started. And if we needed to add one or two, we could. But remember, there's a lot of expense when you drop those site work on the, I'll try them. Yeah.
And if I may add, Mr. Goodwin, keep in mind, modulators are not ideal. This is not something that we are proposing as a long-term fix. These are short-term fixes as we continue to respond to the growth. Because we were, we wanted to make sure, as you can see, the Millbrook, as we add those on, as you asked, Dr. Erskine, is because we had questions as to why we don't just put modulators instead of building the fourth high school. It's because it's not ideal. It's not long-term, but we still have the space issues that we're dealing with at Millbrook and Charando as we continue to grow.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Hammer. All right, the next slide has current modular classroom lease costs. So you can see where we have modulators that we either lease or own around the division. I'll give you just a minute to kind of take a look at that slide, but I do want to draw your attention to the number of classrooms total, 49. And that yearly lease cost per year, again, uh, $380,000 currently. That's the current lease amount that we have on those. So again, that's here. The administration are the ones out back that we have IT in around the rear. And then the other ones are school-related. So you know where those are. Some we own, some we lease, but you can see that cost.
Do we?
Mr. Goodwin, I'm sorry.
Do we have an estimate of what this will cost next year once we add?
I'm so glad you asked. There it is. Yes, that's my next slide. Do I want to hide it? Real quick, Mr. Bell, do you want to ask a question before I reveal? I do, and you're not going to have the answer to it. Okay, let's see. I would like to know how much we have paid for modulators since we put the first modular ever in Frederick County Public Schools. All of that added up over time, if that's possible?
Since 1999?
Since 1999.
Wasn't it 96? I thought it was sooner. We can look under that.
Maybe it was. I know Charando was 99.
Yeah, we can look.
So we can, we can take a look at, uh, I'm sure we have documentation about that with finance. So we'll partner and get back to you. Thank you, Mr. Bell. For that question. Because I think it would be interesting for everyone to know how much we've dropped for trailers over the past 20 whatever years.
Yeah.
Since Ms. Ms. Klein's been in high school. Oh, sorry.
So long. Can we get an inflation comp, a little inflation adjustment on that too? Excellent, thank you.
Be glad to provide that. And to Ms. Klein's question that she asked about, do we know what it'll cost when we add the Jordan Springs and Middletown? Um, and then keep those, uh, six at Jameswood High School? That cost then would be, we'd move from 24 up to 73, um, classrooms. And then it would be an estimated yearly annual cost, $781,271.20. So the big reveal. Sorry, again. You are the important people. I'm sorry.
Could add another component to this. Uh, these are just the lease rate. These are not the construction cost. So there's another component to this is all the construction cost to install and to remove them.
Don't, I don't want to quote what we looked at before, but I'm pretty sure at Middletown, it was almost maybe half a million dollars for the construction site work.
I think it was closer to 700,000 there, like 500 and some thousand, I believe, for Jordan Springs. But if you start looking at all of them over the years, there's a cost to install them to bring to the site and then the cost to remove. But we haven't removed very many. But there is a cost for foundations, for electric, for.
Water.
Water, sewer, any of those type of things. The costs start going, you know, if you're looking at a total cost other than the lease, it would take us a little time to put that together, but we would have to work with facilities and some other people, departments to put that together. But the cost does get kind, uh, goes, uh, enormous after a while that you would start looking at all of it. But you would have to do a full picture of that if I think that's what you're asking. How much are costs? Not just lease, but.
And also you should consider deconstruction costs for when you remove them.
That's right. We'd have to experience that some.
What about the, uh, platform and everything that you've put in? Is that lost?
Uh, some of those platforms are actually leased. All your walkways and your ramps are actually part of the lease.
But I mean, the, the foundation.
But the foundation, some of them we do have to remove. We, we, we've put, we've put concrete piers in before. Sometimes you can use a, a poly pad and put them down. Just depends on what the situation.
Middletown will require a number of piers.
Piers and co. So there's a cost to that. Construction cost adds, so it would add up rather quickly on, uh, modular trailers. So we can put that together for you though.
So we're looking at roughly over a million dollars next year with all the.
Right, not including the lease.
Not including the lease.
These modular companies must love us. My golly, can we get a BOGO? I mean, is there like a dis, a volume discount on trailers?
Well, I will tell you from conversations we've had and from talking with lots of people, they're actually hard to get. A lot of divisions actually, because we're doing this now and our goal will be to have these in place in spring, right after winter breaks. So we'd get everything in place to make sure that actually teachers could set up a classroom and have that ready for next year rather than just at the last minute in the summer. Um, so we went ahead and got on their list and they told us that they were glad that we were doing this early because they felt like it was going to be a really tight market if we waited.
And we do, do multiple vendors. We tried to get as many vendors as we can. There's not a lot of companies that do these, uh, modul, uh, classrooms in. Uh, but it is a diminished market and it is tough. And it's, it's, I grit my teeth every time we have to go through it.
So the ones we own, we would get a good price on?
I, I don't recall, Mr. Funes, exactly how many we do own. I think we own some, Wayne. Oh, it's up there? Yeah. Uh, and your question was again, I'm.
Six, 14, 19.
Oh, we, by the time we're done with them, they're 25, 30 years old. And most of the time, uh, we're lucky to get someone to, to pay us just to, to remove them from the site. It's been my experience. Uh, I haven't been involved too much with the modular since my eight years here. But the ones we had, we had some that, uh, old Ailer school that were so old that we couldn't even move them. They fell apart, uh, type of thing. So there is some.
They're in demand. They're in demand. I thought we could tell.
Uh, not, not once we're done with them.
Not the old ones, right.
They're so old. We've got a, we've got, um, a six-pack mod up at James Wood that's about 25, 28 years old. And it's got, it's so much repairs by the facilities department there. Uh, we'll be lucky to get someone to be able to come in there and let them take them away for us at cost, you know, so we don't have to pay them.
But Mr. Kenny, if, if I may, and Mr. Funes, I think that's a really good question. But we do have newer ones that we have installed and we have new ones that we potentially will install. So if that's something we could look into about what that cost would look like, because.
Well, to own them and, I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
Because we own them and we sold more than newer ones. I understand the ones that were older because Charando, I mean, those have been around for a very long time as we just spoke about. So those falling apart, yeah, we probably won't. But if we can get a ballpark of how much that would cost, say the modulators at Jordan Springs that are going to be, what, eight years old by the time we sell them, six years old? What that cost might potentially look like. Now, of course, it'll be a estimate, but I think that'll be a good idea to see if that's something we can.
We don't own any of those.
Correct.
Jordan Springs.
Well, which ones? So any of your.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question.
Right. So any of those less than the 25 years? So like Red Bun, Indian Hollow?
It's a little before my time, so I'm not sure.
Gotcha.
The more recent trailers we lease, so we don't own.
Okay. So it would be a wash. Okay.
We started leasing trailers maybe seven or eight years ago.
And every time you move them, you incur a substantial price, you know, to set them back up again because of what it does to the walls and to the roof and to the windows and.
Trying to see if there's some sort of savings there.
We have moved them around. We do move them from one site to another.
We can, we can look into purchasing instead of leasing and see what the saleback would net us.
Yeah. That's what he's asking.
Yeah. Let's take a look at that. Yeah. Any way to save money on this because as, this isn't a long-term fix for us. So if there's any way that we can save this, but also to respond to the growth, that's something we want to do. So.
Well, I think that's a good idea because if, if we're keeping them for a multitude of years and, uh, just like a car depreciates in value, um, you know, if, if we're keeping them for a long time where it's cheaper to buy it than to lease it every year, um, I'd rather go ahead and buy it. But, you know, also if, if we're going to only need it for a short amount of time, maybe at least be a better option. Um, just kind of looking into that. And I'm sure you guys already do that, but yeah, I'd like to see those numbers as well.
And when we get those, uh, in the spring at those two elementary schools, I'd love to invite you all to come and take a look at those when we put them out. So you can see, you know, it is a great learning environment inside of a modular, uh, you know, basically, uh, building. It's not what we want, but the older ones are much smaller. They're not, they don't have great lighting. The newer ones, they do take those things into consideration because children are learning in these spaces. So we do want them to be updated, the right size for classrooms so people aren't, you know, they can actually conduct their programs. So. But I do want to, we'll do more about modulars and spend some time there. Right? Okay, great. So that was already covered. So I want to go back over to the, uh, updated charts on enrollment and capacities. This is our high school enrollment and we're looking at high school because when we bring the high school online, the capacity line is red and you can see the 2930 school year opening of that fourth high school gives us the opportunity to have more capacity than we have enrollment for a number of years, which is a good thing. We're excited about that opportunity. And then for an elementary standpoint, because of our two expansions, when you look here, um, we have the, uh, 28, 29 opening there of those two additions. And then when you take a look there, we do however, go back at capacity. Our capacity line just stays barely above the elementary school enrollment. So we get a little bump and then we're right back again due to the growth in the county.
Mr. Goodwin, can you go back to slide 10? I just want to do a little quick math here. So we have a capacity line by 2034. Is that right at 5,400 or 5,500?
Let's see. 20, did you say 2034?
Uh, 2030, at the very end, like the flat line, the capacity, the flat line capacity.
Okay. That line up there looks like it's 54. Just either 54 or right above it.
Couldn't tell from the parallax. Okay. So let's say 5,400. And then by the time we get the enrollment, blue line all the way out to 2034, is that at 5,200?
That's with four high schools and it's about 52, somewhere right under 5,200.
So we have what? 4% capacity left over in, by the time we open the doors in 2029, so 2029 to 2034, that's five, five years, six years. We only have three to 4% buffer.
That's right. Now, I do want to remind everyone, um, if you didn't hear it last night at the building and grounds meeting, one of the things that Mr. Kenny talked about and one of the things that we recommend is if we do the design bid build, we could build in some add alternates, which would actually be a larger capacity for the high school.
I think we're going to need that because running five high schools at 97, 96, 97% capacity in just five years post-build of the fourth high school, that's not gonna, we're going to be looking at a fifth.
So if we can, you know, create more space in that regard with that, you know.
Definitely.
Design bid build process. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great point. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, we'll be back where we, where we are right now. We'll just be grayer and less teeth.
For yourself.
Wow. All right. Speaking of capacity, I'm going to move on to CIP goals. All right. So CIP goals, priorities and items. For this, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Hummer. So thank you, Dr. Hummer.
So thank you for that question, Mrs. Klein, because I think this is very timely when it comes to our future projects. Because yes, we want to be sensitive to these three big projects that we're moving forward on. But there are other needs that this, that our county has that we want to make sure that we get ahead of these, uh, our school division, excuse me. So if you look further down the line of the list that's there in front of you, and for those listening at home, this is located on board docs as well. So you can take a look at this list. And one of the items that we have spoke about, and that's why we, we're at where we're at now, is there is an opportunity to expand Millbrook and Shorando, just not right now. There's no way to do that with the trailers behind Shorando, with the space issues that we have, but there is potential in the future as we move forward and getting closer to 2034 of potentially, once we open the fourth high school, of expanding Millbrook and Shorando so that we can get ahead of those numbers. Now, based on our projections and where we are going, it's looking like down the road, we might potentially need a fifth high school. But to help alleviate that, especially with our other needs, we might be able to do some other things before we get to actually a fifth high school. Just wanted to throw that out there as well. Um, so there's going to be two items that's going to come before you all at the school board meeting next Tuesday. Again, no action here because these are items that are going to come before you. This is the second time you are now seeing this. Is here are our proposed CIP goal priorities for FY '26. And these are priorities that we will review and adjust every year. So these are your CIP priorities. So these are the ones that we have outlined for you. If these are, if there's adjustments or changes that you would like to see, please let us know and we're more than happy to make those adjustments. And this just gives us some guides in regards to what we need to focus on. As I mentioned to you all, the CIP project for the county is a five-year plan, but we review it and adjust it every year. We had a conversation with the county earlier today with the county administrator with conversations of where we currently are with our three projects, because that's going to take a majority of the next five years. But towards the end of those five years, we are proposing that we add the next three projects on that list, which is the Bass Hoover Elementary School renovation, the Apple Pie Ridge, uh, Elementary School renovation, and then the onsite traffic safety improvements. It's a two-part process. So just because we add these items to that list does not mean that we ask for an appropriation of dollars now. And I want to make sure that's very clear for you and the community because we know these three projects are a huge lift for us. And we want to make sure also that we don't lose sight of these projects because if we don't add these projects to the list now, we don't want to add them in the future and it looked like we were hiding something or being, not being transparent. There are projects that we have to continue to address and look at. So those are the next three projects that we want to focus on. These are the next three projects based on conversations with facilities, with planning and construction that are next up on the list. For Bass Hoover and Apple Pie Ridge, those projects have been on that list for quite some time. And as I've mentioned to you all, and, and those projects have been broken down here. So let's, let's start with Bass Hoover. There's many different aspects to the, the renovation of this building. And Mr. Thomas is doing an amazing job with utilizing the space that he has and maximizing that space. But one of the biggest issues with Bass Hoover and Apple Pie Ridge is the open classroom concept. And if you haven't been over there, I'm more than happy to take a tour over there with you. But essentially it's all these classrooms in clusters and they're separated by partitions. And that can make for a very, very sensitive situation, especially if there's an intruder or if there's some sort of emergency. They have to put everybody in the middle of the, the, the space and it's hard to fit all those students in that space as well as moving and navigating that area. So it's also very, very complicated. And there's no way to lock the door to each of those spaces. So it's one door that goes into that entire space. So there's a multitude of issues that we need to renovate there as well as the age of each of those buildings. There are going to be some other aspects of those projects that we need to get ahead of and work through. The project totals there that you see on that list, let me go back really quick. The reason that you see two totals there is because the first total is if we did a full renovation, full from start to finish, hard renovation. The second number is specific to that building because as you saw yesterday, there is some work that we're doing at each of these buildings. We are replacing chillers. We are replacing roofs. We are replacing those aspects. So that second number is going to be the number that's probably going to be the more realistic number. And as you saw, as we've worked through this last CIP project, we have to get an estimate of how much this is going to cost. And then as we get closer to that project and as we get closer to asking for the appropriation of dollars from the county, we will get more specific in regards to what that dollar figure is as we continue to make those adjustments. Mr. Atkins, looks like you have a question.
I've got a few.
Yes, sir.
So we just went through a couple of slides and talk, and we've been talking for years about space and capacity. And I know that some of these, these projects are needed, but a renovation doesn't really address that as, as much as an addition or building on, uh, you know, just me spitballing here. But I think a more appropriate, uh, use of county dollars would, to hold off on those renovations. And I know Bass Hoover needs it desperately, but hold off on those renovations and be working toward, you know, the middle school or the elementary school, you know, constructing that rather than doing a renovation at a school. If we're, if we're so desperate and in need for space and the county, you know, they keep growing and growing and we, I think, you know, I'm looking at acoustic problems is what it's talking about. I'm, I know it's noisy, but I think alleviating some of the, uh, um, capacity in those schools will help reduce that, you know? I, I just don't think that those would be my two top priorities.
So I, that's why we're having this conversation. Again, these, these are our recommendations for you to take into consideration in regards to what the next three projects are. I think the one piece to, to alleviate getting granular at this particular moment in time is we are not going to be asking for any appropriation of dollars in the next year or two because of these big projects and because of debt capacity and such. So we can agree that these three projects are going to, what's going to move us forward. And then next year we say exactly that. No, we want to expand A, B, and C. We want to build the fifth middle school. I think the other piece to remember about these two projects, Mr. Atkins, and please, Mr. Kenny and, and Mr. Davis chime in on this. One of the things that we're also responsible for is taking care of our assets. And if we continue to push it down the road for Bass Hoover as well as for Apple Pie Ridge, it's going to get to a point where those buildings might not be operational. Um, yes, there are going to be some acoustics and there are going to be some aesthetics that we want to work through, but there are also going to be some innards that we're going to have to replace. And we're going to have to make sure that the building is being able to use so it can go beyond. So we're not looking at three elementary schools in just the one. I want to make sure that, um, that's based on conversations that we have had and I want to make sure that that's something we get ahead of. But fair point. I think the other piece that we wanted to move those three projects up is, one, they have been pushed down the road for many, many times. But two, as we've discussed, we want to be strategic with how many new schools we're asking for.
Understood.
Right? And, and we want to be strategic so that we can build the trust of the community, build the trust of our board of supervisors. So it doesn't look like, oh, we got the fourth high school. Let's go ahead and continue to press our luck. We want to be careful with that because we also want to keep in mind that debt capacity as well, uh, for, for the county. So, um, anyways, fair point. And at the end of the day, it, it's y'all's decision in regards to what three projects are next. Based on our conversations with the county today, they felt like these are three projects that we can add to the fourth and fifth year of the next plan. But again, we're going to continue to review these and, and have these conversations. Because another piece that we can do, Mr. Atkins, is we can say we'll do these three projects, but basis we get closer to 2028, 29, we can say these three projects and a 13th elementary school or and a 15th elementary school. Because the last thing I want to add, which really helped us this last cycle, if you recall, is before we would just send all of our projects down through our five-year CIP. We had seven to 10 projects on there and that was an exorbitant amount of money. It was an exorbitant amount of conversation. And a lot of times we had one to two, three items at the top, but what was happening? Folks were focusing on seven, eight, nine, and 10, and it wasn't getting us anywhere. So we met with the county, we met with my team, I shared it with you all. And it actually helped us out to get us what we needed where we just focused on three projects. And these were three really big projects. So it was, it was helping us to not get distracted with other projects, to stay focused on what we needed. So we can send 10 projects down in our five-year plan. I'm not recommending that. Not smart. But I think if, as we continue to have these conversations and develop, I think that's going to help us again, build trust and, and work through that. So fair point. I just think we need to be strategic. That's why we recommended that. But if you want to change that, that's totally up, up to you guys.
I'd probably have to think on that one.
Yeah.
A, a little bit because I, I do agree, you know, strategically and, and nobody wants to get hit, you know, um, with building and, you know, these other schools. But with the, uh, the capacity issues, the, the incoming housing that's being developed, um, and we look at the cost difference between when the fourth high school was proposed till when we got it built, the millions of dollars that were kind of just sitting there and, and just kind of growing over time with interest and everything. I would like to see if, you know, in the future though, if markets are, are trending favorably to building, um, that we would advance those schools up to when, um, you know, the, the market would let us do that and it's more favorable to us. Whether inflation goes down, so it's not such a burden on taxpayers and construction costs going down. If we could look at that and have that kind of aspect, um, I'm not saying we have a, a crystal ball here or anything like that, but, um, yeah, it'd just be something to look at. And then not to, just like you talked about just a second ago, I don't want to put the, uh, get too sidetracked here, but I'm looking at all of this right now. And then we have Middletown Elementary School renovation at number 12. We're adding on to that now. Um, I, I don't really know if having to renovate that, uh, would be such a, on that, such a high priority there. I think that would either be taken off the list or, or going down. And then I look over at NREP. My question with NREP is I, I understand that, that building is old, you know, and it, it definitely needs some work. But my question there is can we have, since it's not just Frederick County in there, can we pull dollars somehow from other counties and Winchester City who also use that facility? You know, maybe strategize with them on when that can get done? And then being that it is, uh, a special needs school, are there grants involved for that? Is there any kind of grants that we would get for construction on that?
So, so great questions. So first is there is a lease that these two other entities do pay us. I don't know if you know the exact cost of that, but that's Winchester City and Clark County. They do buy into that. Not enough to, to build or expand on it, but it's, it's money that could be used towards what have you.
Can we increase the lease?
Right, right. We, we could, um, but it is part of a, of a consortium of those three regional programs. Um, the other piece with grants, I'm, I'm not aware of, of expanding in regards to grants that are available. We're always looking at grants to see if there's anything available out there to help us with these types of construction costs. The building is definitely old and there's definitely some aspects of that building that are falling apart that we want to get ahead of. Um, the other piece, kind of to that point, Mr. Atkins, and you brought up a really good question about Middletown. Anytime we add items to this list, these are very intentional. So we're not just kind of throwing a dart at the wall and saying, all right, here's Middletown. Let's just throw it on there. These are based on the age of the building and they're based on the aspects of the building that might be wearing down. And that's why these items are on the list. That's why Apple Pie Ridge and Bass Hoover have been on the list for so many years because they're way beyond when we should have renovated those buildings. And because of the dollars that we have not received through the CIP over the years, that's why they continue to be on that list. So I just wanted to, to add that, that piece in there because that's something we want to make sure that we continue to get ahead of. Because if we keep moving it down the list, there might be other things that we're going to have to focus on with that particular building, which could then impact our CIP because now we're going to be adding more dollars to that aspect. So ju- just kind of that, that domino effect there in regards to, to that. The, the other point with, with these projects is they can move around. You know, thi- this was just a, a draft kind of recommendation of based on, again, conversations we've had about age of building and where we're going with growth. But the one thing I do want to draw your attention to in regards to why the 13th elementary school and the middle school are 2030 is, sure, we can, we can move them up the list now, but I want to make sure we continue to be intentional. If you look at our elementary schools, we're not going to be above capacity until 30, um, 2033. But to, to Mrs. Klein's point and to what we're trying to get ahead of, we're still above that 85%. We don't want to function at that 100%. So there might be some veracity to moving up that 13th elementary school. Middle schools, we're, we're boarding around that 85 plus 85%. So that's something we definitely want to make sure we get ahead of. So it's going to be contingent on, do we want to change history? Which historically we've waited till we got to that 100%. Or do we want to, or do we want to change history and start to move on the 85%, which is best practice? And I think that's a conver- question rhetorical at this point. That's a question that you all will have to, to ask the constituents in regards to how we want to respond to that growth. Because historically we have not built before we've gotten to that capacity. So, but great questions, Mr. Atkins. And, and again, this is based on our recommendation. So if you all want to change or adjust or move around, and we have conversations with the county, so they're prepared to do whatever it is you all vote on next Tuesday.
I have a question for Mr. Kenny, actually. Uh, it's a construction question, I think. Is it contingent on, uh, expansion to renovate first or does that, are they mutually exclusive? Basically, can you, can you expand without renovating? Because I see that there's some renovation plus expansion and which is easier, which is less expensive?
Yes. It's a, it's a good question because it's an involved question. But yes, you can expand. Depends on how, what the expansion will involve. Uh, you, you try to have, uh, let's say, let's take Middletown. It's got the gymnasium component. It's got the classroom common area. We can construct those pretty much autonomous to the rest of the building. They can keep their operations going, things like that. It gets into, do we bring separate power feeds in? Do you bring separate electrical, I mean, uh, heating, air conditioning feeds in? Do we come back through the main building? I think, uh, facilities is up, has been doing some phase work up there. Interior of the building with heat and air conditioning. Do we mess with cooling tires, things like that? So yes, you can do an expansion without. It just depends on what type of systems you're doing, what, how you're tying in the electric, things like that. So yes, it's a good question. You, it, it can be done and we try to do that. So we just don't disrupt the classroom, uh, activities during the day so much. So you can do that. So, uh, the toughest is what we just went through with Indian Hollow and James Wood, uh, where you're doing a phase renovations, occupied phase renovations are the most difficult. You don't want to go through too many of those in your career, but we just did two of them, uh, back to back. So. But yes, you can do that. And, and if I've answered your question, and please tell me if I haven't, uh, I'll keep expanding. But yes, you can do that and do an addition and then do the expansion without doing renovation.
So then it's probably better to do the renovation first and then do the expansion.
Uh, typically you do the expansion first. So you give the, so you take, you have someplace to put your students while you're under renovation.
I see.
So, uh, if you think of why we're doing the modular classrooms, uh, up at the schools and the two schools we're doing now, we got to have somewhere to put those students while we go in and do the expansion. Soon as we get the classrooms built, we'll put them in there, modulars go away.
And that jives with this, this, this punch list basically is that you've got the middle school, or Middletown expansion and then later further down, you've got the renovation.
You got the renovation. You go back and you gather up what you didn't do in the past. Now, we're going to do some renovations too. Uh, we've got to expand the core.
You'll have to. Yeah.
At, at Middletown for a larger cafeteria and things like that. But basically you do your expansion always first and then you go in till you do your renovations.
Appreciate it.
I have noticed that we haven't mentioned James Wood Middle School. Uh, that was a question answered. If we want to keep it, we're going to renovate it, we're going to sell it. It's not, there's nothing about that on the list.
Yeah. So that wouldn't be necessarily on this list, but that would definitely be conversations we want to have as we get closer to the fifth middle school. Um, Mr. Chair, I, I wasn't prepared to speak about James Wood Middle at this particular moment in time, but that's something we can definitely put together and have more conversations about sooner rather than later. Um, but that's not, they, they've been through a renovation over there. So I, they're not up for another renovation at this point. I know we're working on the roof and other such things, but if it's something we want to look at, Mr. Funes, Mr. Chair, that's something we can definitely put together sooner rather than later. But it wasn't part of the actual CIP five-year plan. No, sir.
Mr. Kenny just, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee just mentioned the last renovation there was 2002.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. Now, as a middle school, that is the one that's the most crowded.
Correct.
And that's the one that if you look at the five and 10-year projections, it just, we've talked about also needing modulators at some point there, too. So it is definitely a topic for discussion.
So moving on, the last projects that is on this, our projection of the, the next three projects for the five-year plan would be taking care of these traffic, traffic safety improvements. We have these plotted out and planned out. There's a lot of issues with each of these areas specifically with, and with drop-off, with bus loops, so, so on. So we definitely want to make sure that we get ahead of these, these particular projects, that's why this is on the list as well. And we've been in many conversations about these projects. Yes, sir.
A quick question about the traffic safety improvements. Has there been any discussion on providing a, I hate to use the word trap, but putting some sort of speed limit automated ticketing system around the schools and using that to help raise funds?
It's, it's on the board of supervisors' agenda for tomorrow. We were at a meeting last year where it was up for discussion, I know it got pushed down the road, so.
Kooky, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so we'll see what they vote on tomorrow. I don't know if they're voting on it tomorrow, it's up for discussion tomorrow, I know that, because I got the agenda, so I'll keep you posted. We do have one here, because this is considered Winchester City.
Yes.
So there is a camera right out front there, so be careful. And there's also one on the road right over here, so there you go.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, and then last up, I know, want to be cognizant of time, is we have the reorganization. I know that Mr. Goodwin's going to go ahead and talk about that. So this will be 30 seconds, unless you guys have any questions, and then we'll go from there.
All right, thank you. Of course, all of these projects are a wonderful thing for us to be able to do in the future, and it's going to require people and lots of collaboration for us to get that done. So we did take a look at the department, the new name for the department is Planning and Construction. So we also have Planning and Construction. You'll notice that we have, if you haven't already seen, we have a director position posted right now that we'd like to interview for at some point in the very near future. And I believe we have one or more candidates that have applied that we need to review. So Mr. Kenny is now the Assistant Director of Planning and Construction. And then we have Full-Time Architect, that's to be determined, and that would, we do not have one of those on staff at this point in time. It's just there, and it is not posted, but we will work with our architects, depending on the delivery model. I know that was required in the past for CMAR, but not for design bid build, because we'd have an architect that we would work with there. A clerk of the works we currently have is Jeff Clemmons, and then Mr. Lee continues to be the Coordinator of Planning and Construction. And they're all supported by Katie Herbaugh that's there. So I do want to compliment the department for the amount of work that they've been able to accomplish to get us to the place we are now. We feel really good about our enrollment and our projections for enrollment. I remember when I started this position, that was something we really were working hard on, and we were talking about Weldon Cooper's numbers, the numbers in the division. So Mr. Lee has worked really hard to make sure that those are accurate for the years that we have, so I commend him on that work and all the other work that he accomplishes for us with planning. And Mr. Kenny, I've been with him on many, many job sites, where he makes sure that they stay on track, to make sure that Indian Hollow is completed by or ahead of schedule, Jameswood High School completed by or ahead of schedule. And on top of that, he does a lot of collaboration, of course, with the buildings and other projects we have going on in our buildings. And Ms. Harbaugh, who's not here, who works in that department, does an amazing job supporting them and leading in many, many areas as well. So I look forward to this new reorganization of the department that will make it robust and able for us to have what we need to make sure these projects are completed in time and give you something that you'll be proud of as a board and our community, and our children ultimately will benefit from. So thank you for allowing me to talk about that. So any questions about the new reorganization for that department?
Quick question.
Yes.
So I noticed there's some new positions, it looks like. So are we adding positions or are we shuffling positions?
These were positions that were shuffled.
Shuffle, okay.
And, yes, repurposed.
That's what I thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Repurposed, that sounds much better than shuffle. Thank you.
Thank you, we're excited, and we'll keep you updated as we look for our director. And then, just for a recap, the final slide, Dr. Hummer, if you don't mind, this is all of, these are the items we talked about tonight, and again, the superintendent is not recommending any action tonight, and this was for information. So Dr. Hummer, thank you for the opportunity for, to be able to speak.
All right, Mr. Chair, that's all we have, unless there's any other questions.
I have no further questions. Are there any announcements from the board?
I do want to add one quick thing. I apologize, I promised less than 30 seconds. As Mr. Kenny mentioned, we're currently working on what the next steps are going to be as we continue to post the architect, go through that process. You're going to see that in the weekly this week, so you can see that. And then I'm also going to be working with Ms. Hilkowski, as we're going to continue to put those updates on the website, because we have our CIP website with, now that we're moving forward with these projects. Because number one is, we want to make sure that we involve all of you, the board of supervisors, and the community in regards to the next steps with these projects. So all of that is going to be communicated, and we'll continue to get that out, and if there's other ways to get that information out, please let us know. So I just want to let you know that, Mr. Sturtevant. Thank you.
Quick question. Talked about a committee for the fourth high school, right? Who's all on that committee?
We have just started that list, working with Dr. Hummer this afternoon. Right now, we usually bring in people from instruction, we bring in people from construction, facilities. It's a multiple, I guess, multiple faceted group, so we get a, a well-rounded group. If you're talking about for the evaluation of the A&amp;E firm?
Yep.
Yep. There usually about, somewhere around eight to nine members on there. They get a broad spectrum from here in the school board office and then out in the staff. So we just sent that list, preliminary list, over to Dr. Hummer and Mr. Goodwin here this afternoon.
Transportation and security on there.
So it's, it's, at this particular moment in time, this isn't to build out the architectural design, so it's not appropriate to have those members on this part of the process, but as we get closer to, when we get an architect to build out the school, then they will be part of that process.
At any time we have, just like we do other committees, are we going to have members of the public that can get on these committees?
So, so that's a great question, Mr. Atkins.